Okay, everyone, I've got seven o'clock here in council chambers, so we are going to get started. I am going to start with a roll call. You just make sure your mics for the TPZ members, make sure your mics are on, and just reply with "here" or "yes" or something. Barbara Brenneman?
President.
Patrick Carrier?
Here.
Mike Raboulis?
Here.
Matt Pogson?
Here.
Inez is out today. Marcy Schwartz, sorry.
I'm here.
Thank you. Scott Halsted?
Here.
John Bevart?
Here.
Keith Bevart?
Here.
Great, thank you, everyone. All right, Barbara, it's all yours.
Good evening, this is Barbara Brenneman, Chair of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the Town of Farmington, and I welcome you to our meeting on Monday, September 14, 2020. I would ask Shannon to read the call to order, please.
Okay. Town of Farmington, Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, September 14, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Jason LaFleur, application for special permit to raise up to 10 hens at 319 Scott Swamp Road, R12 Zone. 244 Main Street LLC, application for special permit to reduce parking stall length and aisle width and expand office use at 244 and 248 Main Street. Site plan approval for site improvements related to expansion of 244 and 248 Main Street and waiver of landscape regulations at 240, 244 and 248 Main Street, B1 Zone. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard. A copy of these proposals is online at https://www.farmington CT.org/departments/planning-zoning/ and planning and zoning/pending applications, or please call the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 27th day of August, 2020. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brenneman, Chair.
Thank you, Shannon. Before we begin the agenda, will you join me in a pledge of allegiance, please? A pledge of allegiance to...
Do the flag. United States of America.
One nation...
One nation under God. Indivisible. Justous.
Background. Thank you. I'm sorry. There's little background noise when you're saying it. We hear it a little bit differently here. For those of you that wonder why I come to these meetings and everybody else is in an online conference site, I live out in the woods, and so I often have interruptions in my Wi-Fi and my Internet. And so rather than risk having to be in the middle of a meeting and lose the Internet, otherwise I made a decision to come to these meetings and sit in person. It's also very helpful to see the maps and be able to see them at a large level, and I appreciate that. I know there's been conversation in town about us going to in-person meetings. I think we're away from that. Town councils have started it with some shielding on the podium, but the way it is shielded, we could not have maps up there. We could not have the needed reference maps available in such a narrow space between shields. So my anticipation is that we will continue to be online for a while. But I did want to explain, people have asked me, how come I come to the meetings and nobody else does? So that's why. I don't want to be cut off in the middle of the meeting. So I want to move to the agenda. New Business, Lee Ferguson at 10 Picquabook Lane for fence exception request.
So if the individual that's on the phone could just state your name and residence, and we will, you can go ahead, I've got your plan up, and I also have details available for you. Is that... Pretty sure. Maybe I've unmuted. I see an R Ferguson. Yeah, I just hear it.
Mr. Ferguson, are you there?
He is, there. You have to unmute yourself for the Ferguson application. Barbara, we can move to the next one and come back to it, if you'd like. I can always do, it's not that complicated, but we can come back. I'd rather they speak on their own behalf as possible.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Art FX at 1007 Farmington Avenue with a sign application, please.
Okay, do we have anyone on the phone for the Art FX application? I've got 23 people on the phone, and nobody wants to talk about the application. I got somebody raising a hand.
Nothing.
I have Lauren Rosen, is that... Lauren, are you here for the Art FX application?
Hello.
Can you hear us?
Yep, are you here for the sign application?
Yes.
We are. I apologize. We want to say, you know, getting used to the whole virtual and Zoom has been a little bit challenging, but thank you for your consideration tonight. My name is Linda Loriano. I'm the permit supervisor, and with me is Lauren Rosen.
I'm the owner at Art FX on behalf of Dry Cleaners.
Thank you. Thank you for the consideration tonight. I'm going to quickly just present what we have requested. It's a replacement of an existing wall sign and freestanding sign at 1007 Farmington Avenue, known as Edrick's Fine Dry Cleaners. And so with that, I am going to turn over to Lauren, and he's going to explain what the new proposal entails.
Okay. So with the building front, we're removing the existing letters. Mr. Edrick's is going to have the front of the building painted, and then we're going to replace the existing letters with letters that take up the same square footage, but it's his new logo, a sans serif type style. And then with the ground sign, we're removing an existing ground sign that we built about 25 years ago. We're replacing it with a ground sign that is actually a little bit smaller, that again features his new logo. A double-sided sign that's in the same position as the existing sign. So the new sign is going to be fabricated from all aluminum plate and acrylic. It's sprayed with epoxy. The old sign, it served its day, but it's made out of wood, and it's in tough shape. So we're hoping that this change is okay.
And I do want to mention that the location of the sign and the square footage was previously approved, I believe in 1998, July of 98, if I'm not mistaken. At the time, there was a survey. I see in your screen that you have the old survey. That ground sign, the location, is not changing. So it is within that buffer, within the front yard requirement. As Lauren mentioned, the square footage of the sign is actually less than the existing sign. And so with that, I believe you have the plans. That's what is, there is, I believe, the external illumination that already exists. There is a light that shines directly onto the freestanding sign outdoors. That will remain. There is no changes to that. And I believe that any of the landscaping will...
Yeah, I mean, the landscaping, I'm not certain of Mr. Edrick's plan. I know that he's doing some landscaping around the property. I think he's tending to the sign to what extent, I am not certain. However, I know he has plans to tidy up the lot. And again, he's repainting the building. And in fact, today, we took down his existing sign on the building so that his painters could go to work. They're replacing the trim. They're painting the front of the building. He's doing some general landscaping, and then hopefully we will replace the signs based on your approval tonight. And I could answer any technical questions, if you have any, on fabrication.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions? Patrick?
No, pretty straightforward, no questions.
Mike?
No, I noticed the note, it all fits our guidelines. The only question is, I see the detached sign lighting will remain. The attached sign, removing the lighting to the bottom? Is it the same type of lighting?
Yeah. So with the lighting, it's going to be relocated to the bottom, only for uplighting sake.
Okay.
It's a pretty subtle light. I think total luminosity is in the neighborhood of 600 at 5,000 Kelvin.
And it will not, it will directly illuminate on the sign itself, not going to, you know, distract any traffic, or it would be shielded at least in that part. It's just directly onto the sign.
And it is just confirming it is the same light, though.
Yeah, that's the same fixture.
Okay, all right. Thank you. No further questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Marcy?
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
No questions, thanks.
John?
No questions.
And Keith?
No questions.
Okay, as we have done in the past, we're going to vote on each Inez we go. And before we do, we need to appoint a replacement for Inez, who is not here this evening. And I believe Keith is on the list to be the next. So Keith, you will be listening and voting in place of Inez St. James this evening. Keith Bevart, okay? The only question I have myself is, is there any lighting on the building sign?
Yes. The building sign, the existing fixture which is located on the top is being moved to the bottom. I wish it was a little more dramatic, but that's what we're doing.
So it's similar to your street sign, that you're moving the lighting to the bottom on the street sign also?
The one they just...
The street sign is existing, and the street sign is on the ground.
Is that ground lit anyway?
Yeah.
All right.
You know, maybe eventually in the future, we'll come in for permits to redo the lighting.
Okay. Would you like to add anything before we go?
I wouldn't add anything. I think it's a pretty undramatic change. I think that just the building's in need of, you know, they say you should remodel every seven to 10 years. In this case, it's 22 years.
It's time.
It's the freshen up, you know, a new paint job and a new logo and a new look. And I think this should be a good look for maybe 10 years to come. What we're trying to do with all our work now, we use pretty much all aluminum PVC and acrylic, and we use epoxy paints, so there's no degradation. And I think that's pretty much what Mr. Edrick's is after.
Better life, longer life.
Yeah, I mean, he's my age. I go back with Dave Edrick's. I've been in business for 38 years, and I think he's been using us for pretty much all of that time. And I think at our age, you know, we're kind of looking ahead, and we're saying, what do we have to do now to get something that looks great, but that's maintenance-free?
Right.
That's pretty much where we're at.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I need a motion and a second to get the conversation going on this application, please.
This is Marcy Schwartz. Motion to accept the new signage as proposed.
Have a second, please.
Patrick Carrier, I second.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. ADRC, reappoint Tim Eagles and Dean Burhoe to the four-year term at the Architectural Design Review Committee. It appears both these gentlemen's terms have expired, and both of them would like to remain on the committee. So we need a motion to approve their reappointment. With a second and a vote, please.
Mike Raboulis, make a motion to reappoint Tim Eagles and Dean Burhoe for another three-year term?
Three years, yes.
Have a second, please.
Marcy Schwartz, second.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Metro Realty Group Limited, Number 1 Munson Road. Accept the application to text amendment to the Medical Office Research Floating Zone and schedule a public hearing date, recommended date of September 28, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
Mike Raboulis?
Okay, go ahead.
I accept the application for a text amendment to Medical Office Research Floating Zone, schedule a public hearing date of September 28, 2020.
May I have a second, please?
Marcy Schwartz, second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Number five is 1 Munson Road LLC, 97101, 103 South Road, and 111 Munson Road, a site plan modification. It is our job as a commission to make a determination on the significance of the application for site plan modification in accordance with Article 4, Section 12. I hope that you have read the planner's evaluation of this, and would like to have some conversation. Patrick?
Do you want me to give a brief run-through, or do you want to go...
Yeah, you can do, that would be a good idea.
I can do a quick run-through in case somebody hasn't had a chance to read through everything. So, and I know all of you haven't been part of the, you're new to the commission starting in 2020, so you wouldn't have had experience or knowledge of everything that took place in 2019. So we, in 2019 in July, this building, this site plan that's before you, was approved. It's 63,000 square foot building. It's three stories. And this was included in your agenda package for the review over the weekend. And then later in 2019, the applicant came back to us. They needed to make the building a little bit bigger. They increased the building to 66,000 and changed square feet. Kept the three-story footprint. Didn't change access drives. And at that time, that increase in roughly 3,000, just over 3,000 square feet, was handled as a site plan modification. The applicant has come back to us. Obviously, there's a, a lot of things have changed with COVID. Some of that is obviously impacted the development industry. It's no different with this. So they're looking to do, rather than put one large building, and they'd like to put two buildings in instead. Two floors, though, instead of three. So it's a reduction in the height of the building, and it is an overall reduction in the square footage by, from the most recent approval of basically just over 5,000 square feet in total reduction. Again, the entrance drives don't change. The parking remains compliant. It's a slight decrease because of the slight decrease in the building area and then generation for parking. The same for traffic demand. There's really no substantive change to traffic. And the grading and drainage pattern is pretty much the same. So when you look at this, you can see the two, the two buildings. And the footprints there, you can see the entrance drives. When I flip back to the original approval, you can see the entrance drives really, there's no change. And the general layout and positioning of things have not changed. The most notable change is going to two footprints and the reduction of the height of the buildings. So when you take a look at what you're charged with for special permit, the use hasn't changed, and any of the major impacting factors have not changed. So it was my thought that it doesn't require a public hearing, but it's for the commission to make that final determination. So that's why it's before you this evening. So if it needs a public hearing, we can get it scheduled accordingly. The applicant is available. If there's some basic clarifying questions, I can probably answer most of them. I don't want to dive too far into this because this is not a review and approval of the application. It is solely to make a determination as to whether or not you feel a public hearing is needed. And if so, then we'll move it in that direction. Otherwise, it'll be before you on a subsequent agenda for review and approval as a site plan modification under New Business. So I just want to be clear on that, that you will see this again. It's just determining under what umbrella you're going to see it.
Questions, Patrick?
No, I don't. It's a two-story, not a three-story at this point, and it got smaller, and everything seems to be pretty much the same, and if not better, I guess. So no.
Mike?
Not really, just only a curiosity question. What's the height going to go down to with the two stories?
I believe somewhere in the 32 to 34-foot range.
Oh, wow, okay. I think that, you know, the one glaring thing that came out in the public hearings was the building height. And I think that with this request, it's certainly, certainly that concern has been answered, and I don't really see a need for a public hearing on it. I'm comfortable with your assessment.
Thank you. Matt?
I was looking at the, trying to use the legend, but I couldn't quite figure out how far this new building is going to be away from the existing house on the adjacent property compared to before.
Okay. So here's the, I'm back to, here's the 63,000. So this is the originally approached building, okay? There's the house. And then when I do the same thing, they, obviously, it is going to get closer. You can't go to two footprints and not get closer, but it is, so there, so there it is there with the second, with going to two buildings. So the proximity to this home, it does increase, but the height is reduced by 10 to 15 feet.
Okay. I personally always enjoy having public comment, so I can't say much other than that. I like public input. But I understand that this is actually reducing, if anything, and under the circumstances, I can understand us doing a site revision, and that would be fine without going to a public hearing. But I do believe that it would be, it might just cause more issues than it's going to help, so.
Thank you, Matt. Marcy?
I'm okay with it being a site revision. I think it looks fine.
Scott?
No questions. I think it's good for this neighborhood, actually.
John?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions. I agree with the rest of the commission. It seems like no need for hearing.
Okay, there seems to be a consensus. So do you want a motion on this, please?
I would, please, yeah.
May I have a motion to, how do you want it ordered to?
Make a determination that it proceeds as a site plan modification.
To accept?
No, just proceed as a site plan modification, no public hearing.
All right. The motion needs to proceed as a site plan modification with no public hearing. I need a motion, please.
It's Marcy, I make a motion that this proceed as a site plan modification.
May I have a second, please?
Patrick Carrier, I second.
Thank you. Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks. Public hearings, Jason LaFleur, three minutes.
Do we want to circle back to the...
Oh, do you want to go back and see if Mr. Ferguson is ready?
We can at least touch base, and then if not, then he can wait until after public hearing, so. He's raising his hand. He's raising his hand. Okay. Let's see what's going on. Let's see what's going on. Am I... I don't see any child. That's your hand.
Did you find him?
He's down there at the bottom of the list. It doesn't look like he has audio, though.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. He had his hand there. All right, there's somebody over here. I got, Jeremy, are you, you raised your hand. Do you have a comment for Ferguson?
I'm also with Ferguson as well. I don't think Ryan's audio is working. We're new to Zoom meetings. My apologies.
No, that's okay, but if you're, I've got, can you see the screen? So you're...
I can see the screen.
So are you prepared to do a brief presentation for the commission to explain the fence?
Yeah, I think I can handle that. We went over it before I left the office, so. So the whole scheme of this here, I guess, is we have a couple existing rows of pines that run along Route 10 there that are, needless to say, they're in a lot of disrepair, especially the lower branches are dying and falling. It's creating a lot of privacy issues to the property. So he's looking to put a line of privacy fence in amongst the row of pine trees just to provide a buffer for his backyard and a little privacy, with the understanding that the pine trees will not be taken down. They will not be disturbed. The roots will not be disturbed. This is just to be used in conjunction with what we've lost with that dead... we've lost with that dead foliage from those trees. So in a nutshell, that's pretty much where this is looking to go, if that makes sense.
Okay. And can you confirm for me the type of fence that's going to go in?
It's going to be a vinyl fence. I believe it's six feet tall, from what I've read, and a black color, and a black color.
Okay.
I believe the total footage is a little over 300 feet. I believe it was.
Okay. The intent is it for, to run the entire length of the Route 10 frontage, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
I know those two parcels in the back are currently empty, but do it all at once. That way, it's done and over with.
Yeah, I believe they're both owned by Mr. Ferguson at this particular point in time.
They are.
So that's the type of fence, basically.
That's correct.
On that idea.
You know, it's almost the same color, too.
Yeah. And these are photos, your photos of your application, but these are photos that Bruce Dear took. They're, from a quality standpoint, a little easier to take a look at. You can, the commission can see, so there's some pink line. You can see there's some fence posts in here, and some string, and that's in essence where the fence is going to go. Bruce had a concern that you wouldn't be able to get the fence in, and so he went out to the site himself. And it was seen that if they are careful with their post hole placement, that it is in fact possible to get the fence in amongst the trees. And Bruce went out and took a look himself to get that understanding. But you've got this lower hedgerow here, but these, these trees are starting to get a little leggy.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything else you need to add regarding this?
I don't believe so. I think it was pretty caught and dry. I think it was just the variance for the footage. That's all, or the distance, I should say.
Correct. And so the commission understands it's real, it's just a, it's a waiver, per se. I had copied in the portion of the regulation into the agenda review. So just when it's higher than four feet and it's along the street line, the commission has to review and approve the request. So.
Questions, Patrick?
Is there, are there any plans for any, like, additional, like, lower trees or vegetation? I mean, it looks pretty well vegetated. But if the branches are dying, is there any future plans on adding anything?
I don't believe so. I'm pretty sure that he had approached the town prior to do something with the trees, but he was kind of told, no, you can't do anything at this point. So as far as I know, it's probably just clean up a lot of the dead stuff that's falling or falling apart and put the fence through, leaving what's there to remain.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mike?
Only question, just looking at the, the plan of the property real quick. That row of pines goes the entire 380-foot length?
It does.
Okay. And I couldn't really tell from the pictures. I had a hard time seeing it. How, how the lower area that is dying out on the trees, how, how high up off the ground is that?
In honesty, I don't know the accurate height. If the fence that we saw there in the picture, if the string lines were six feet, I would say it's probably a couple feet above that. It's kind of hard to tell. It's very deceiving from there, but right there looks really shoddy.
Yeah.
It looks a little greener as you, as you head down Route 10, but I think it's kind of a seasonal thing, too. So.
Okay. All right. Yeah, no, I understand the need for privacy on a main road. I get it. No further questions.
Matt?
My only question is, was anything considered besides just a black vinyl fence? I think what the whole point of having that hedgerow is to have a natural look. We don't really have anything else along Main Street that's that, I don't know, that are big vinyl fences, six-foot vinyl fences along Main Street. I have no issue with a six-foot fence, but I'm thinking more along the lines of trying to make it blend in with what's there. So was there any consideration or is there any objection to a different material used for the fence?
I probably wouldn't be the best one to answer that. I would think black would kind of hide a little bit better than something like white, possibly. I don't know.
Or a pressure-treated. I'm just saying something like a pressure-treated or a natural wood as opposed to a vinyl fence in general.
I'm thinking, he's looking for no maintenance at the end of the day. Vinyl, vinyl, vinyl is final, as the saying goes, vinyl is final. I don't know.
Yeah. Vinyl's going to be green underneath there, even if it was black. So after a short time with trees in there, it's not going to be a very presentable fence. It's going to need to be cleaned regularly.
I'm sure that, yeah, I'm sure he's well aware of that. I can definitely, definitely approach different colors by all means.
The other question is, obviously, based off of the pictures of the fence line being in between the trees, it looks as if a lot of dead branches will have to be cleared in order for that area to be able to even put a fence in there.
That's correct.
Are they going to just kind of lop off all the limbs that are six feet and down or even eight feet and down and just basically have tree trunk? Or are they planning to leave what's alive down there?
They're, they're planning on leaving what's alive alive. Ryan just texted me, actually. There's a row of burning bushes, as you can see, below the greens. Those are going to remain. Those are going to remain and be cleaned up somewhat. But I don't know if those are quite six feet, so the fence may stick up a bit above those. I'm not sure of the aspect ratio here. It's a little deceiving.
I know they're pretty big. I drive by there regularly, but they might even be six feet. But obviously, they're deciduous, or they're going to lose their leaves over the winter. So.
Right, right.
But, okay, I'm just kind of curious what we're going to end up with if, if, you know, that's all clear through there. Not like cut trees down, but cut all the branches off. And what we're going to end up having is just a big, long, 300-foot section of black fence that might be moldy in another five, 10 years. So.
I could attest that it will not be molding, and it will be kept clean. I could tell you that from Lee by, by first-hand knowledge. So.
That's on the record. So that's something. But, okay, thank you. I suppose that's all my questions slash comments for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Marcy?
I am all set. Thank you.
Scott?
All set, thanks.
John?
Has it, there been any neighborhood discussion of this?
I do not. I'm not privy of that. I know the two lots behind his are still vacant, and obviously, his house is on the corner there.
But you're not aware of anybody who has raised objections to it?
I am not, no.
That's all, thanks.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, I mean, Ferguson, anything additional to add before we vote?
No, I appreciate your guys' time and consideration in this matter. Let's hopefully get this thing cleaned up and looking a little better and give him a little more privacy and a noise buffer.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve two public lane fence, please.
Michael Ballis, motion to approve two public lane fence exception request.
May I have a second, please?
Marcy's fourth second.
Thank you. Everyone understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Matthew Pogson, opposed.
Abstention? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Move on to public hearings. Jason LaFleur, 319 Scott Swamp Road, application for special permit to raise up to 10 hens.
Okay, I can see. Holly and Jason, if you unmute your microphone, you can do a brief presentation on your application, please.
Hello, this is Jason. Thank you for your time. Yes, we're looking to put up a chicken coop for 10 hens behind the house with about a 20 by 20-foot fence around the coop, just so we have our own eggs for the family. Pretty straightforward. That's about it.
No, I mean, there was no roosters. I did see some paperwork on what it was going to look like. It's not on the screen now. But no, I really don't have any questions right behind the house in the middle of the property.
Just the applicant, just our standard conditions. Patrick mentioned the no roosters. You're comfortable with no more than 10 hens at any time? You agree with that? And you're comfortable if we review this in a year and review any complaints and then we can make it permanent or revoke?
Yes, sounds good.
Okay. No, that's all I got.
Matt?
No comment. Mike covered it.
Marcy? All set, thank you.
Scott?
No, thank you. Thanks.
John?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions.
All in favor?
Public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition to this application at 319 Scott Swamp Road for chickens and 10 hens?
So we've got four cities. So just any of you have any comments, please raise your hand, and then I can unmute your phone. I'm guessing there's none. One more call. So if you're on the phone, if you raise your hand, and then I can unmute your phone, and you can participate and ask a question. Okay, hearing none.
Hearing none.
We can close the hearing.
I would like to close that hearing to Jason LaFleur at 319 Scott Swamp Road. May I have a motion on this application, please?
Anybody want to make a motion for the chickens?
Well, for the eggs, maybe.
Do we have to make a motion to close the public hearing, or you just closed it, correct?
No, we just closed it. So it's just a motion now to approve the application or or not, I guess.
All right, Patrick Carrier. I make a motion to approve the application for a special permit to raise up to 10 hens at 319 Scott Swamp Road.
Keith Everett, second.
I have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
Do we need, do we need to include in our motion about the no roosters and the review in a one-year?
That is part of standard procedure for the application, if I'm not mistaken. Is it not?
It is. So we can, you can amend it to.
If you wish to.
To include the standard conditions.
Michael Ballis.
Patrick, do you mind?
Okay.
Patrick, do you mind the motion, just to include the standard conditions?
Okay, so I make a motion to amend it to begin with?
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend the previous motion?
Correct, yep.
Keith Everett, second.
All right, we have an amendment to the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment is carried. Go back to the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
All right.
We'll move on to 244 Main Street LLC, 240, 244, 248 Main Street, application for special permits, site plan waiver for expansion of office, personal service, and retail buildings.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Pogson, and I am recusing myself from this matter this evening.
Thank you. I believe John Viverett is going to replace Matt Pogson on this application. Are you comfortable with that, John?
Yes.
Thank you. Who's making?
Okay, Phil. It's, if you, I'm assuming you're going to start, Phil, and you're, I've got the plan up. You are welcome to, oh, hang on. I got two people with their hands up. Okay. Amy?
Hi, Shannon.
Okay. Hi, you had your hand up. We're going to, we'll do the public hearing first, and then you can, you can offer public comment after.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. And, all right. I'm sorry, Phil, go right ahead.
Oh, that's, that's okay. I'm assuming you can, you can hear me. I unmuted here.
Yep, you're all set.
Oh, good. The, I'm Phil Doyle. My company is LADA. We're land planners over in Simmsburg. And we, along with Kevin Clark, civil engineer, and Hillary Donald, architect, have been putting plans together for this. The three of us have put together the plans that you have in front of you. And our client, who owns 240, this commission, maybe not the members that are sitting tonight, but prior commission reviewed and approved redevelopment of the building. It's on the right-hand side of the plan that is up. That's the planting plan. We put some color on it to read a little bit better. And that building was renovated and expanded, I think, five or six years ago. It might be roughly 2014, 15, I think, in that, in that range. And since that time, the, our client has purchased the two adjoining properties. If you've driven past, you will see they are the red buildings that are on the 244 and the 248 properties, where Shannon has put her cursor. And the proposal before you tonight would be to expand the 244 building towards the street. That area would be shown in tan on this particular rendering. It would go from about a 2,100-square-foot building to about a 4,200-square-foot building. And 248 building that is just to the south of 244, that's about a 5,000, almost 5,100-square-foot building. That would be expanded to about 5,500 or 5,600 square feet. Again, when I rendered this, I colored the expansions in tan, a little bit darker tan. They might stand out a little bit more. There would be no change to the 240 building. In total, there's about 13,000 square feet of space on this 1.18 acre B1 zone property. And the ultimate result of the proposal would be expanded to about 13,600 from 11,100 or so. And we would, the reason we are proposing this is when the client bought the property, he had envisioned the creation of a village. And the property has sat there for a number of years. It is slowly deteriorated. My client bought the property last year and decided to make an application to change things. Buildings are older. They don't conform to traditional building code standards for interior height of ceilings, that type of thing. They're older and desperately need rehabilitation. So we're looking to be able to expand and to bring these buildings up to code and to make this really a Class A office space for, for the owner and for the town. We, it's not only the buildings that are old. The parking, the site is sort of cap hazard. It's developed over time. There's something like 60%, a fourth and 60% of the site, I think it's 62% of the site, is impervious surface. Much of the paving extends beyond the setbacks, which today wouldn't be allowed in the zoning regulations. But to the degree that we can, we are pulling back and reducing. But to the degree that we can, we are pulling back and reducing all of the, uh, the non-conformities. We're trying to create something, uh, site plan, uh, that has, uh, more green space. And the, um, we are also trying to be as much as possible consistent with the, um, streetscape, uh, plan, uh, that Mark DeVoe, former planner in the town, made us, uh, aware. And we'd be proposing to extend sidewalk, sidewalk was built in front of, uh, 240. And we'd be proposing where those, uh, kind of crosshatched, yeah, right there where Shannon is showing the, um, cursor. We'd be extending that sidewalk, a couple of hundred feet to the, uh, south. That would be consistent with the, with the streetscape plan for the village. Uh, that, that plan had suggested the extension of the sidewalks, didn't make any other recommendations specifically for this area. But when you look at the plan, you, you see also there are recommendations as you get closer to the, to the center of the village for fences, walls, definition of front yards. What we've decided to do here, you notice, is, uh, propose a boxwood, a low, like, three-foot boxwood hedge in front of both the 244 and the 248 buildings to pick up that village streetscape wall, uh, look. We'd also be proposing to add more flowering small trees that were generally recommended in the, in the streetscape plan along the frontage, so we picked that, that up. Uh, as you know, the B1 zone is a zone that is really, uh, started out as a strip commercial, uh, zone. And the, we've looked at it, when we started this project, we looked at a number of different options for the owner saying, how could you rehab these buildings and/or do something that, that might be the most efficient? This is not necessarily for him as, for construction purposes, the most efficient, but it creates for him a, a development where the buildings line the street as opposed to parking lining the street, try to push the parking lot back, reduce the amount of parking that is visible from the street, put the majority of parking, uh, to the rear. Now, the 240, uh, parking lot is to the back of the building, that was already accomplished in our, my client's first application a few years, years ago. And the, there is a significant separation of plant material between the parking lot and the adjoining property, which is the Wellington condominiums. And in talking to town staff, we, what we have proposed to do is to do something similar to the back of our site, to the, there's a T-section, uh, sort of a panhandle that runs to the rear. That, uh, area is virtually entirely paved, we'd be looking to pull the pavement in, the area is shown in, in, uh, green, we'd be transport, transplanting a lot of the plant material to, to the, to the rear of the property there and a little bit higher, Shannon, just behind, uh, where the roosters would be located. That area is all paved at this point, we'd rip the pavement out, we'd transplant a, a deal of our, our plant material in that area and in other areas that would fit. And as suggested by town staff, we'd be proposing to run a six-foot screen fence along the entire perimeter as Shannon has indicated, and then to the north, Shannon, we'd extend it up, uh, as well, even behind the existing plant material that's in place between the, the, us and the, um, Wellington condominiums. We would, we, we would meet the town, uh, requirements for green within the, um, parking lots. One of the things that we, that we've noticed in the, in the application, I've asked for a waiver of planting permits, particularly as they relate to that, that panhandle area. With, with that area already being, uh, virtually entirely paved, we can only pull the, uh, parking lot in so far. And, uh, along the, what, the southern, uh, side of that line, just where Shannon had her, uh, cursor, the, uh, it's interesting that the sewer access for the Wellington condominiums crosses via a town easement from Main Street, starts, uh, at the property line in the back and runs out to Main Street, and it's an easement that's on the order of 20 or so feet, uh, wide. And, uh, in that area, there is, uh, prescriptions, uh, that the engineering department would prefer we not have a lot of plant material over the sewer line. So we would be, uh, adding, uh, a tree on the outside of it that would be part of our, our parking lot , uh, landscaping, middle of that parking lot, right there, Shannon. And then I talked to Bruce the other day and he had asked if we could maintain the arborvitae, the existing arborvitae that are relatively close to the, to the property line, even though they are in the sewer easement, um, we, they are, um, probably on the order of 15 or 18 feet tall. And I said, yes, we could, we could maintain those, even those who are in the easement. So we'd be doing that. All of our lighting, and, and, step back, so I'm asking for a waiver to allow us to accomplish, um, this, because normally the, uh, requirements would be under today's zoning to, to have no part, no plant, excuse me, no paving within 15 feet of a property line and therefore use that area for, for planting. Because this is a pre-existing site, I can't accomplish that to the full extent that the regulations, uh, would require, um, a, our lighting meets, uh, all of the, the dark sky requirements that, uh, the town would, uh, would like to see, the lighting height would be contained to this, lighting would be contained to the site, and the height is no more than, than 14 feet. Uh, we, we believe that to the degree possible, we have eliminated all of, um, or reduced all of the existing non-conformities that might exist on, on the property. We would be proposing to integrate the properties and instead of having three separate lots, we'd be eliminating the property lines, we'd be filing the lot, uh, line adjustment plan that's in the set, we'd be combining the lots into, uh, into one. I think it's easier for the tax assessor, it's, uh, certainly easier for, for us because the properties wouldn't need cross easements, uh, that type of thing. Uh, we've demonstrated that service vehicles can move through the site. Uh, now, the, these properties have two driveways and everyone needs to drive in, turn around, back up, and do K-turns to leave. Uh, this would simplify the, um, and I think maybe not safer, uh, for, uh, service, for public access, for emergencies, uh, if we have a, uh, a loop system in such a way. We've extended a sidewalk in from the street so people could walk from the buildings out to the street or, uh, conversely, uh, from, from the street into the, uh, into the buildings. I think we've done everything we can to try to create an enhanced, uh, environment here. Uh, we would drop the impervious surface from the 62-odd percent that it is to about 57% even with the changes that we're making, we're able to, uh, to accomplish that. When I said that the site is old, uh, it is in many, many ways, the site lighting is virtually nonexistent, it's, um, obviously fixtures on the buildings, flood fixtures, things like that. The stormwater system is some old, composed of some old gravel, uh, drains that must be dry wells. Our civil engineer, Kevin Clark, has, uh, prepared a, um, revised utility and, uh, drainage plan. And, and you might wanna put that up, Kevin could say a couple of words for that, about that. The, um, in renovating a piece of property, the way you either have to, uh, that's, yeah, that was one of my development options.
Yeah, I think I just accidentally closed.
You have the same problem I have with, uh, doing these little presentations. It's hard to figure out which one of your plans is-
Yeah, well, I think I just closed the one I wanted, 'cause why wouldn't I? So, hey, bear with me, Phil, I definitely, uh, there we go.
You, you have the, um-
Yeah, that's here, I just gotta scroll through.
This is a comparison, tho, tho, that plan was a comparison of our impervious surface. The, the members of the commission, you've seen all that, we've given you the proposed and the existing. And then somewhere in there, Shannon, it's towards the end is Kevin's utility plan, that's the molding plan you're going past, that's a truck.
Yeah, I feel it.
Yeah, the truck movement, movement plan. Might have gone a little too far, maybe? I don't know. Kevin's S-plans are in there somewhere, Shannon. Maybe they're after the architecture, I'm not sure. Keep going, keep going down, yeah, keep going the way you're going, just keep going and keep going.
Because some of this, we had to truncate some of this so that we could email it to everybody, so I'm wondering, yeah, they're not here. I apologize, yeah, that's because I, what I'm showing is what was, uh, what was sent via the email and it looks like those plans she's got, um, truncated because it was so large, yeah.
Right there, though, if we can make do, why don't you stay right there and enlarge that plan if you can?
Of course I can, yeah.
Uh, what, this happens to be the materials plan, but what it does show, we have turned on all of the drainage structures that we'd be proposing and, and we have outlined, uh, the subsurface stormwater collection system, infiltration system that would be placed in the, just below the existing pavement in that rear panhandle. It's those dashed lines, that, that, that box, yes, exactly there. That would be, uh, mimicking what was built, uh, just to the right of where your cursor was behind the 240 building when Kevin did the drainage system for, uh, 240. All of the stormwater on the site, given the soil condition, uh, would be infiltrated into the, the ground. So it meets all of the DEP requirements for, for stormwater discharges, both in terms of quality and quantity. And a number of, of test pits were conducted by, by Kevin on the property and this design was reviewed, uh, by the, by the town engineering, uh, department. So we would be spending a small fortune to upgrade, um, the paving, the drainage, the lighting, everything, uh, has to be brought up to, uh, current standards. Um, probably I've just said everything Kevin would need to say. And, uh, and I think I'd like to have Hillary, Hillary Donald, our, our architect, explain to the commission what the proposal is for the buildings.
Can you hear me? This is Hillary Donald.
Hi, Hillary.
Hi. Um, thank you, Phil, that was very, that was a very nice presentation. And so I'm from, my name is Hillary Donald, Dark Architects, and I worked on the 240 project and we've taken that as a, sort of a beginning and tried to continue the, the overall feel with these two other buildings. And so, um, at 244, we saw on the site plan that we, we added in addition to the front of the building, so basically it's nearly doubling the size of the building, it was, it was roughly, uh, 1,200 square foot footprint, so it was 20, 2000 square feet, and so we've nearly doubled that. And, um, we've, we're using materials similar to the materials we used at 240, so there's a combination of, of clatter, so siding, um, horizontal siding, and also vertical siding. And these materials are, um, they're hardy siding, which is, it's made out of cement, it's a cement, cementitious product as opposed to wood, so it, um, won't rot and will look better for a longer period of time, it holds paint much better. Um, the roofing, we're, we're probably gonna be using an asphalt roof, but we're gonna use the same red color because we started that at 240. Um, we've got, uh, window patterns that have a combination of, of larger glass and smaller, solid, smaller windows, so we're, we're just trying to work within the, the nature of our neighborhood. And, um, there's actually a drawing that I, I have a, a streetscape drawing that is later on that can show how they fit in. Um, and so that's, oh, another thing to mention, um, so the, the entrance to this building is in the back, it's in the northwest corner, and the grading has been manipulated in the site plan so that that entrance will be at grade, so it's, it's handicapped accessible. Right now, both of these buildings are a couple of foot to two feet above grade, so they, there is no easy way to get in, uh, at the moment. And, um, I think we can maybe move down to 248. 248 is, we, we are adding a small amount to this building and for the most part, the, the footprint is existing. We added a, a component in the back to create an entrance, another accessible entrance, and a small bump in the front, the site plan showed that quite clearly. Basically, we're adding about 300 square feet on the footprint, so we're adding roughly 600 square feet because it's a two-story element. And this, um, this architecture is similar, we're using a combination of, of siding, um, and, and horizontal siding and vertical siding, and similar window patterns that, and generally, we're, we're taking this building and using its foundation and first floor layout and we're reconstructing the floor systems because they're, this particular building is about, has at least three buildings kind of built on top of one another and it's, it's very difficult to, to make, to meet today's codes with fire rating and, and egress and all that, and so the framing systems will be completely reconstructed. And I guess generally that's, that's it. I might send this back to Phil to mention the parking that we've eliminated in the front of the street. I hope you mentioned that, maybe you did, but maybe if you can go back to that. So that's, that's it for the architecture for me. And I can, I can, this, this drawing was meant to just show how we sort of fit into Farmington and we're using basic shape of colonial-shaped structures that are very, that aren't very fussy. You know, we have barns that have vertical siding, we have two, two to two-and-a-half story structures that are similar to what we're trying to propose here. And then the other drawing that Shannon had, that's the streetscape that you see along Main Street. So you can see, um, we start at Maxim Beverage, we work our way across the Pogsons Farm and then there's the 250, the gray building. And then, then our buildings are the next two that we're renovating. And then you can see 240, which is existing now. And then a remnant of some of the, the residential-type scale buildings that used to be on Main Street. So that's, that's it for architecture, thank you.
Shannon?
Yeah?
This is Phil again. Uh, Hillary had mentioned, um, the, uh, on-street parking that exists in front of the, uh, in front of the site. And you could use this plan or you could maybe flip to, oh, the demolition plan or the, or the, uh, or the existing impervious surface plan, uh, that was in there. It's one of the green-colored ones. That one, yeah, you click on that. And blow it up and so that everybody can see it, kind of blow it up. You can see what I, what I meant in general about, um, the site having been developed over time, probably prior, it started prior to zoning. And the gray represents impervious surface, you- You can see the outline of the, of the buildings. But out at the street, there, the, there's a, probably about a 12-foot wide area of green between the property line and the curb line. And it's hard to differentiate whether that's right of way or not. But the right of way is set back probably about 12 feet from the, from the curb. And move that back down again.
Yeah, trying real gentle. There we go. I wanted to zoom in so they could see. So there's the property line and there's the edge there and there's the pavement.
See what happened a number of years ago, when the 240 building was renovated, a sidewalk was built in front of, it says concrete sidewalk, in front of the 240 building. And then it was bent and taken out to the existing paving in the street. I've seen some old photographs that seem to show that that existing Batum and his paving, that's all within the right of way, probably was striped for four or five parking spaces at some point in the past. And when we first started this project, our client had said, well, I'd like to, you know, keep those parking spaces. And the advice we got from the town planner, former town planner, a number of months ago, probably six or eight months ago, was that he would prefer those parking spaces be removed. And we add that in as green. So that's what our plans now show. Our plans would show that part of our application to the Connecticut Department of Transportation would be to take out that pavement and to put the curbs back in there and to make that green space. Because that's state right of way, that is not included in any of our beneficial calculations for increased green because it's not part of our site. It would, it's sort of ancillary green that would be added back into the, to the environment. Just, I think this morning, I was made aware of a letter that, that came from the Pogson family who run the farm stand saying that, that they would like us to keep those parking spaces on the, the street. Because occasionally those spaces are used for, by, by their clients for the, for the farm stand. The, Shannon and I talked about this this afternoon. We, because we can still extend the sidewalk as needed in front of our property and as suggested by the, by the village streetscape plan, we could leave those, those parking spaces there. We don't have to take them up if, if they, if they actually benefit a neighbor. And I was going to wait till the question and answers for that issue to come up. But, but since Hillary mentioned it, it is a new twist. And we could go either way. If it helps the Pogsons, we can, we can leave those parking spaces untouched. And, or if the commission desires us to take the spaces out and to show that as green as we have on our plan, we can do that. But we'll, we'll bow to your wishes on that. And I think that's all I have to say at the moment. I've probably forgotten something, Shannon, but we should probably let people ask questions and have the public comment. And then we can all go home and get something to eat.
That's a good idea.
Okay. So we'll start with the commission and then we can go to public comment.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Patrick?
I mean, the only question I had was the, I had a few, but they were answered right in the end there with the, the parkings and the comparison between the, the existing pavement and the newer pavement. The stockade fence in the back, that's wood, I'm assuming six-foot high wood fence?
I think that's what we have shown, yes. But I, I, I have to double check the detail to see if it's vinyl, but many times our, our spec-
I'm sorry if I can say something. I will probably try to do something with the hardy plank material.
That is, that is, Tom, you should introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. This is, my name is Tomasz Kuczewski and, and I'm the owner of the property. And I would like to keep the fences the same way our building's going to be. And then, you know, we're going to build, build a coverage for dumpsters because we'll look very nice and everything's going to look the same.
So it would match the, your, the hardy plank, which is that panel system that you have, Tom? Correct?
Exactly.
It looks like wood, but it is a manmade-
Exactly. Looks exactly like wood to, to you cut it and you will see that's not wood. Actually, that's a cement, cement board.
Okay, thank you. Now that's it. And I'll listen to the other commissioners. So that's it for me right now.
Mike?
Just to orient myself a little bit, the 248 property, is that the old O'Reilly's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What is the, what is kind of the goal for what the use of the buildings are? Office, business, retail? Do you, do you know yet?
Yeah. Right now, it's all based on, on, everything is driven in a way by, by parking count and market. And these buildings are, are being positioned as office.
Okay.
In the past, has been retail. It's been a number of different things. But the special permit used to, to this approval at some point would be for office.
Okay. I appreciate, you know, the, the working with the, the neighbors regarding the parking. That would be something I'd like to see, the, keeping those parking spaces along Main Street in there. Certainly it gets used quite often. And I wonder what kind of problem we would run into if we remove those spots and where people would park. I know the property definitely was in need of some renovation, including the parking lot. So it's certainly appreciated, this, this plan. I saw some concerns about the building height. It certainly falls well within our regulations for this. I don't see anything that's crazy large. I mean, it reminds me of the, the office properties across from CVS on Main Street down the road a little bit. The only thing I'll say, maybe I just can't see it on paper, looking at a paper copy of this. But I mean, the architecture doesn't necessarily remind me of New England Village. Maybe it's, I just can't, can't see it come together. But I also think that, given the prior approval of the 240 Main, I was not on the commission for that, so I can't speak much to that. But I think if you, if you stray any farther from there, then that's going to be the one building that stands out. So that's all I have.
Marcy?
Yeah, thank you, Barbara. I, I don't actually see a problem. I think that the site plan looks great. And I think that it's, the area is in need of a little renovation. I am so pleased to hear that the parking will be retained because that is a major stopping point on the way home for sure. Glad that's going to be preserved. So thank you.
Welcome.
I don't think he heard you, Barbara.
Scott?
No, no questions. I'll just reiterate what the other commissioner said about the parking. It'd be great if they could keep that street parking there.
John?
So I just want to get a clarification on the frontage on Main Street. If I'm understanding this correctly, the sidewalk that's proposed is not actually on the property, but it's on the state right of way?
Yes, sir.
And the plan I'm looking at now has two trees in, in front of 248. And I'm assuming with this whole notion of parking, that those trees would not be there?
No, actually, those trees are, when you go past, those trees are there. The state must have planted them as part of one of their programs years ago. They look like two bloodgood Norway maples. And you can see the property line. Shannon has enlarged the, the plan, but the property line is behind those trees. In that area, at Bruce's, Bruce Sears' suggestion, I have actually pushed the sidewalk back four or five feet onto our property, the client's property at that point, to get around the root systems of those, those trees. So the answer to, you know, the first part of your question is the sidewalk entirely on the state right of way? Yes, it is, or it could be. Bruce has suggested I try to preserve those two tree root systems. So we've just slid the sidewalk back there. And we'd be offering an easement for the sidewalk to the town of Farmington for that particular section. I have a health question about one of the trees, the tree on the, on the left. We're going to bring in an arborist to take a look at it. And if the tree cannot be saved, we'd be replacing it with a similar tree. And that's all in the green space, not in the pavement.
So, so the parking spaces, which we're talking about preserving, there in front of 244?
There in front of 244 and 248. And you see where there's that note out there that Shannon just had? See the trees right there? It's, we'd be, our proposal actually called for ripping up about 10 feet of pavement and putting in about 10 feet of, of green space from that curb line that Shannon has the cursor on right now, going out towards the street. The street's very wide at that point. So we were going to pave and eliminate those, those parking spaces. If, if you can imagine, down in front of 240, is, it is a similar situation. Shannon, you could, if you ran the cursor right along the curb line in front of the 240 building, that double line on these plans represents a curb. There's a single line that's just right there. That's the painted, Shannon, just come down a fraction right there. That's the painted shoulder line that the DOT calls it, that white line that goes down the street. We would be, would, originally, we were proposing to be able to paint that, that white line or repaint that white line in front of our, our two properties, 244 and 248. And we'd be bringing the curb line out to match the distance set back from that painted line that the curb line is in front of 240, 244. Because that's what District Four, the Torrington Division of, of, excuse me, the Thomaston Division of DOT always asked for. And, but we have parking spaces there. And if we're all in agreement, we won't do that work. We'll leave the parking spaces where they are so that there's no loss to anyone in the neighborhood with, for parking.
And the changes, such as the sidewalk that you're planning on making in the, in the right of way, have been state approved?
No, what I have to do is, if the, if the commission eventually approves these plans, I have to take all of this and go to District Four with an application so that they can approve it.
Okay, so that's step two.
That's step two. It's always step two. You can't go to them. They won't accept the application unless, unless they know that you guys have approved it.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
Keith?
I have no questions. Mine was all parking center goes, well, I think it's great that they're willing to acquiesce to the neighborhood's request to keep the original parking that's there. So nothing to add.
Thank you, Keith. This is a public hearing. Are there people in the virtual audience that would like to take part in this discussion? Please raise your hand.
Yeah, okay. So we've got, all right, Amy, you're all set. If you want to unmute yourself, you're welcome to speak.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Hi, all. This is Amy Suffardini, the chairperson of the Farmington Economic Development Commission. I'd like to read a letter in the record. Dear commission members, At a regular meeting of the Farmington Economic Development Commission, held on September 9th, 2020, the EDC commissioners voted unanimously to support the application pending before the Town Plan and Zone Commission. The commissioners reviewed the merits of the project and found it to be consistent with EDC's referral guidelines. The economic impact statement supplied by Mr. Kraszewski stated a project investment of $810,000 and anticipated creation of 18 full-time jobs. During the presentation to Economic Development Commission, the applicant explained that the proposed project would combine two commercial parcels and create a village setting. The proposed project includes various improvements to the existing buildings and upgrade to the stormwater system, a new sidewalk that would allow for better pedestrian connectivity, a decrease in the impervious surface, and more robust landscaping plan to include additional trees and green space. All upgrades that would benefit as well as add to the economic, economic vitality of the area. Mr. Kraszewski's renovation of 220 Main Street resulted in new businesses moving into the town as well as substantial improvement to the existing building. This additional project will accomplish what has already been achieved at 240 Main Street and create a cohesive village-like bit setting with upgrades to both the existing buildings and the outside green space. Therefore, as chairperson of the Farmington Economic Development Commission and representing the consensus of the commission, I recommend to the Town Plan and Zone Commission approval of this application. I thank you in advance for your consideration of our position. Sincerely, Amy Suffardini.
Thank you, Amy.
No problem.
Someone else that would like to speak, please?
If you want to speak, you can raise your hand via the computer, via the online system. And then you, I can acknowledge you. Okay. Well, maybe we'll go to written correspondence and then we can check one more time.
There's, is there no hands raised?
Yeah, it's just, it was Amy. So that's the one hand raised.
That would be the only one?
Lower. There you go.
And Amy's all set. Yeah, so there's no one else. So I don't, we'll do written correspondence, which actually I have. So that was the Economic Development Commission, which was just written. This is an adjoining neighbor. So all these documents were forwarded to the commission. They were also forwarded to the applicant. So we'll just show them. I'm not going to read them all in verbatim because they'll show on the screen. And this is being recorded. So we have a document that came in from the adjoining neighbor. We have a second document that came in from the adjoining neighbor on September 9th. This is the owner at, at 250 Main Street. And this is a third document, a different owner, it's a condominium over at 250 Main Street. It's the actual owner at 254 with a comment letter. Again, this was shared with the commission. And the final written correspondence that was received was from Mr. and Mrs. Pogson. And this is an email received that was shared with the commission and the applicant. So these documents were all shared with all parties. And I will check one more time to see if there's any other-
No other hand raised?
Any other hand raised? And anyone else wanting to make a comment regarding these applications? And I am not seeing. So we will, we can move on.
I'd like to just put something on the record. It's my understanding that, should this be approved, that all the existing division lines of property are being erased? And this complex will be one parcel?
Yes, ma'am.
So the only existing lines that are being retained are right of ways and sewer lines, power lines, water lines, that kind of thing. Everything else is being erased. It becomes- Everything else is being erased. It becomes one parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's much cleaner if we do it that way.
Well, that's the way the deed should be. And it's important that it be on record right now that that's what's going to happen.
Yes, I think.
Rather than have a problem later, 20 years from now, trying to figure out which is which. So I appreciate the information. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I will close this public hearing. Now we'll go to a voting status. I need a motion to open the conversation with a second, please.
Mike Bullis, 244 Main Street, Delacsee. Motion to approve 240, 244, 248 Main Street. Application for special permit, site plan, and waiver for expansion of office, personal service, and retail buildings.
Marcy Schwartz, second.
I want to mention, we're asking that the parking spaces be retained. It seems to be the consensus on that. That probably should be part of your motion.
Yeah, if everybody was comfortable with that, I have no problem adding that in, but.
It's not as presented because as presented shows those parking spaces gone.
Did I, I didn't, wasn't sure. Did I say as presented?
Well, no, but that's the way it's presented in the public hearing write-up for the meeting. So it doesn't.
I just wasn't sure if you guys wanted to do an amendment that we vote on it or not, or if it was a general consent, so I can add it to my motion. That's fine.
What do you think, Shannon? Which is the best way?
Mike, why don't you just go ahead and add it to your motion? Because I think everybody, as we went through it, seemed everybody was there. So I think it's okay if you don't have any to add. And thank you.
And just adding to that motion that the parking spaces in front of 248 Main Street be retained.
44 and 48.
Yep.
244 and 48.
Yep. And Marcy, you want to second that?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Does everyone understand what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Log in.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Move on to the planners report?
Yep. Let me just one second here. All right. So just a handful of things to keep you folks up to date. The governor extended the executive order to allow for outdoor dining. So it had been due to expire, I believe it was September 9th. He has extended this to November 12th to allow outdoor dining. I think there's five or six local restaurants that are taking advantage of this to have outdoor dining where they had none or to expand their outdoor dining where they had some. So that's been extended through November 12th. We'll have to monitor this because if it's something that, for whatever reason, the governor doesn't extend the order, but it's something we want to continue to permit, then we'll have to make a modification to allow this to continue. So, but for now, we're covered and we'll just keep an eye on this. And I'll put a note in my calendar because we'll have to do it by the November meeting, if we're going to do this. The other thing that has come up, of course, now with the weather getting cooler, are folks wanting some of this outdoor dining to have a tent over it and to either even have some of the sides down for that, for the outdoor dining. Georges and Unionville actually has already been in touch with me. So I've got a little more homework to do on it to see how the executive, how the executive order handles this. I have to touch base with Farmington Valley Health District to see what their thoughts are on it. But basically, at this point, from a, I believe my loose understanding is from the executive order is that once you put a tent up and you bring the sides down, it goes from outdoor dining to enclosed dining. And so some of the parameters change a little bit. The other thing we need to be mindful of is do we, does the commission want to allow these, the tents up? Because we would have Georges fronts on a street, the Unionville diner fronts on a street, Tap Rock fronts on a street, Wooden Tap doesn't front on a street but is visible from the street. Naples, their back dining is already enclosed, but it is towards the back. So we do have a notable amount, Cuginos, you would be able to see. So, and what they're doing is that, I believe from a quantity standpoint, because they're allowed a 50% capacity, something to that effect. So they can start to even in an enclosed area, then it adds to their square footage and then helps them with the capacity. So my general thought is, as long as we're under this environment, that perhaps that's not a bad thing to do to help these restaurants sustain their business practice. I think we've just got to have something in place so it's clearly understood that once executive orders are lifted that are restricting the quantity of indoor dining, that the tents have to come down. That's my initial thoughts on this. But I'm certainly, you know, if anyone has a comment or a thought, this is kind of an open discussion. So I'm certainly welcome anyone's thoughts on this.
It's Barbara. It seems to me as long as the COVID orders are in place, we ought to be able to accommodate our local businesses to their advantage at this point. My only question is about some of these exterior heaters that are now going to start servicing as the weather changes. A lot of the outdoor restaurants are going to put heating elements out in their outside dining areas. Now, does that have to go through the health department?
Well, I would think the heating then starts to fall, so we've got a lot of overlap on these things. So the heating elements in the absence of a tent, I believe, are fine. The heating elements inside a tent, you've now triggered something with the fire marshal. So, so that's two different, I think if there's no tent, then that's okay. If there's a tent, then you're into a different code and regulation. So as we've been looking at these, you've got zoning, health department, fire marshal, and building officials overlapping and trying to make sure we're coordinated and at the same time not overstepping bounds and still trying to help these businesses do what they need to do to survive. So it's been no easy feat.
I just think we all have to be aware of the layers of approvals that we might have to make decisions about as we go into a cooler calendar. And it's important for us to be realistic about helping folks, so.
Right, right. Does anyone else have any comments, concerns, thought of something that hasn't been discussed? Thought of something that you want me to look into with respect? Okay, hearing, hearing none, I'm going to move on. If something comes up, feel free to send me an email. So the other thing along these lines with having to deal with COVID and changes in spending and buying habits, et cetera, Lord &amp; Taylor is closing at the mall. And so it should be no surprise to anybody because they're closing nationally. We have been contacted by an attorney that represents Lord &amp; Taylor's parent company. And Lord &amp; Taylor holds a long-term lease at West Farms Mall. So the attorney called, making inquiries as to how this space could be repurposed. And this is one of the, you know, the anchor tenants, right? We're all familiar with that term, the anchor tenants. And that's a term that we're going to start to see, I think, go to the wayside as all of these malls have to be repurposed and our anchor tenants are diminishing. But they called and I, you know, we talked, we had a very candid conversation. I said, look, obviously, if it's any type of retail use, it can be re-tenanted as a right. And they were also thinking of other things, either professional office or medical office. Obviously, I think there's concerns with professional office space because with all of us, or many of us telecommuting now, I think there, a lot of people are rethinking their professional office space. But they're thinking medical office or even residential. There's actually a news article today about the Post Mall, looking at some of their space.
Happening all over the country.
And using that as residential. So they had asked for a zoning opinion letter from me. So we did, which is not unusual. We get this all the time. Basically, what we told them and put in writing is that you could re-tenant for retail by right and that they were welcome to submit for a special permit for any of the other uses. And they may or may not require a public hearing depending upon the nature of that use. Obviously, with a facility as large as West Farms Mall, if they're not increasing the footprint, and even if it was just medical office, they're not changing traffic patterns, you're not changing entrance drives, you're not changing drainage patterns. You know, there's perhaps a little bit of configuration with how you're functionally getting people in and out of the mall and in and out of this particular space. But from a global standpoint, there wouldn't be whole-scale changes. So we put that letter and sent that off to them. But I wanted to make you aware because it's something that collectively we're going to need to start to think about as to how do, how do we, me and our staff, start to work and look at this? But you as a planning commission, how do we want to start to think about how we are repurposing these spaces? And how are we allowing flexibility in our zoning regulations to allow for the repurposing of these spaces? And we're going to see it not only at the mall, but probably also some of the professional office space as well. Because they just, they don't need the same amount of space, I think is what they're going to find from a long-term standpoint. So it's just something to start to think about. Perhaps pay attention to articles that you're seeing in the newspaper. We obviously are doing that here. You know, that's our job from a planning staff as well. But it's going to require a little out-of-the-box thinking on the part of the commission as well and start to get comfortable with other ideas about how we utilize these spaces. So again, it's just an FYI, bringing it to your attention so that it doesn't come as a surprise down the way.
Shannon, just a comment on that. This is Barbara. I feel strongly that we need to think creatively. And I think if you, if you were to go online and look at mall transitions all over the country, you'll find some real creativity out there. And we may not want it all. We may not want any of it. But we have to research, and I applaud the staff for doing what they do. But we as commissioners also have to be creative and try to maintain some integrity in that mall that's usable. So creativity may be very important as we go forward in the next couple of years. And with so many people working from home now, when you realize it's been a successful transition for many companies to have their employees at home. Then consequently, they don't need the office space that they needed before. So we're facing some transitions and we need to think carefully about our town and how we want it to all take place in the future. It's just a comment. Thank you.
Shannon, Mike Bullis, quick question. I have, I have been reading up about some of this stuff. It's very interesting. And knowing that these big, these larger stores are going out of business, did they talk anything about repurposing for entertainment persons and purposes? Movie theater, anything like that, restaurants?
They did, yes. So there's, yeah, there's a variety of opportunities. So that has been kicked around as well. Or something in, like a Dave and Buster's, but there's lots of different types of facilities like that, bowling alleys, you know, that type of thing. So yes, so those are also possibilities as well.
Movie theaters again.
In fact, movie. Well, movie theaters may be an interesting one though, too, because they've certainly had a roller coaster ride. But yes, so it's not only office space or medical office, residential, but it is trying to repurpose so that there's a, it helps as far as a draw to the mall.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Shannon, Matt Pogson here. I just wanted to say thank you for sharing that with us. I felt like in the last, I don't know, four, five, six months even, we've kind of been in the dark about some of the stuff that might be going on around town. Bill used to do a great job of giving us that report and gave us a lot of things that were going on in town and laid it out for us and talked about progress. And I understand, under the circumstances, you are pulling many jobs and wearing many hats. So I appreciate that. But I just wanted to know, I wanted you to know that it's nice to hear some other things that are going on in town. And if that stuff comes up in the future, too, I would look forward to hearing more of that. So thank you.
Certainly. No, you're very welcome. Thank you. Okay, again, any other comments or questions? Okay, again, feel free to email me if something comes up. You know, we'll do our best to get an answer or at least make sure we chat about it at the next meeting. So don't hesitate to send something. One more thing for you, real quick. And it's tangential to what we just talked about with Lord &amp; Taylor. And we've chatted with Barbara about this. We'd like to have Rose Ponte, our Economic Development Director, come in and maybe do a quarterly or twice-a-year report to TPZ. And then I would do the same to her EDC commission. Certainly understanding that TPZ doesn't base their decisions on the economics of a project or the economic driver. But Rose has a pretty good pulse on trends and needs and gaps that we have in Farmington. And I thought that may be helpful to start to understand, you know, what is she hearing from our business community? Are they having trouble hiring folks because of residential or the lack of residential that's attractive to young urban professionals? Is there an issue from a, you know, restaurant-type ability in having lunch meetings or whatever the case may be? And again, certainly some of the things she was hearing six months ago are very different than what she's hearing now. But I thought from that lens, as we're trying to understand how we may or may not want or need to be flexible, having an understanding of what Rose is hearing on, either even what other communities are doing because she's very well-connected with the other economic development directors in the state as part of what she does day in and day out. She's out and about a little more than certainly we are in the planning office. And she's meeting with our businesses on a regular basis. And certainly understanding, you know, we have our residential sections in town that we need to be mindful of and guide and make sure that we're having appropriate zoning. I think the same holds true for our business community. And I thought it might be helpful to hear from Rose from that aspect. Again, understanding we're not looking at the economic drivers on these, but just the trends that would support these businesses so that they can continue to sustain their efforts in Farmington. So whether we start that at the next meeting or in October, you know, Rose and I are kicking around a timeline. But, and it would be brief. It would be at the, you know, towards the end of the meeting. Certainly nothing to, you know, delay things, but, you know, a brief. But, you know, a brief 10-minute update for you folks so that you can hear what we're hearing. And I think that's important as you're trying to make these decisions and just try to decide if, you know, this is a good thing or not for Farmington on any given application. So that's all I have for this evening.
I need a motion on the minutes, please.
Patrick, I make a I make a movement, I mean, a motion to approve minutes of the July 20th, 2020 Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Have a second?
Mike Bullis, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night.